Good evening. We are very excited tonight to have with us some very amazing students. I want to share with you a little bit of the program we're going to talk about tonight and give recognition for. And it is called the Waterford Advanced Achievement Advisement. It is new this year, and we created it to recognize those students who go above and beyond academically and with leadership skills toward to help our community at each of the high schools. So there are some requirements that these students had to meet. And since this was the first year, we graduated them in, but I want to talk a little bit about. So essentially, students who participate in this program need to take AP or Advanced Placement courses, or Dual Enrollment courses, or a combination thereof throughout their high school career. Additionally, they need to have a final break point average of at least 3.7 PAD, which is pretty amazing given the AP and Dual Enrollment requirements. In addition, those students are required to perform community service hours, and they are required to take certain courses before they even get to high school in order to prep them to be able to take those higher level advanced courses. So these are some of our amazing students. This is the first year, so there were requirements for seniors. But as I took the applications in February, I want to tell you that without fail, every one of these kids would have met these requirements for all four years. That's what makes it amazing right now. So I am just thrilled to be able to recognize this first cohort of Advanced Achievement students. And I'm going to ask after one of them to come up and present his awards. We invited everyone, but a lot of kids couldn't come. Busy time of year, you know how that is. But we want to say out in his name and recognize them. And we're going to start with Katherin. So if you are a Katherin student who is here tonight, could you come and stand right here for us, please?
Well, everybody's coming up here just once again. This is our first year, and we were very pleasantly surprised at the number of students qualified for this. A impressive group of students, and I would commend you for all your hard work and dedication that brings you not only here today, but saw you all last night, and will be seeing more of you and other honors that are coming up as well. So I appreciate all that you do. Jonathan Bellion. Yasmin Alhala. Noah Dunsthor. Madeline Fields. Jennifer Yilbert. Sylvie Dunnich. Dawson Rumens. Jacob Palaski. Caitlin Bibbitt. Victoria Van Gogh. This is Weston. My last name is W.U., I would have been after you. Actually, I wouldn't have been, I'd have scooped it off, but. Ellen Wright. Our group from Kettering. Want to just circle up by the board? Another board would like to give you a handshake and congratulate you as well. Please don't front there. Be careful of the wires in the air. Right, well, there for the left, the marksman, he's got him on now. And I have from my, some of these students, it was a Tuesday night at the Senior Honors Awards. Great, great group of students, and we congratulate you on all you've done, which is really amazing. Rachel Gudnerz. Dawson Cabs Jr. Kyle Dennis. Danielle Foster. Marco Barro Gonzalez. I may actually be mentioning my final closing remarks, but as long as he's here. He's trying to go do homework right now, so. But Oxford Field Rides go Harvard and Stanford. Alan Johnson. Sarah Freskian. Zanri Shi. Jessica Schwazinski. Lea Wilcox. And Ryan Wojcicki. From my, our Advanced Achievement Advisement students. So if you want to try and inform, that might be. My job for nameplates? Thank you very much. There will be a great time. The moms and dads who are responsible for a lot of this success, please, please stand up so we can see you. Yes, come on, moms, we'll stand up. I've never met a successful student who has some really great parents behind them, so thank you very much for all that you do. Check and go on to the next. Okay, we'll move on to Kettering Robotics. And while I'm talking about this, if our robotics students want to do the same thing, and come on over here. And I'm going to say a few words and turn over Mr. Smithka. Then we're going to have the robotics students introduce themselves, tell you who they are, what grade they're in. If they're a senior, I want you to tell what we're doing on the couch or what your next steps are. So we're really excited. I know we've been bragging about this a little bit. I'm right ahead of the team here. This is the captain's robotic team 3098, named 2018 First Michigan State Champions. Before we remove the spy, I have to remind you, why don't we have the parents of all these great students stand up right here now? Thank you, moms and dads. A lot of schluppin' kids around to a lot of different places, and we truly appreciate all you've done. So yes, they are state champs, but in addition, this is their tenth season as a robotics team. They were district event winners at the Centerline Tournament. They won the Instructional Design Award at the Centerline Tournament, the Imagery Award at the West Michigan Tournament, Innovation and Controls Award at the State Tournament, four division winner during the State Tournament, and they are currently ranked number two in the state of Michigan out of 508 teams. I want to introduce you to the teacher and robotics coach who makes this all happen. Steve Smithka is a fantastic teacher at Kettering High School. I've spoken with many robotics students over the years. When they open up the course catalog, they don't look at the course name, they look at the instructor. They take Smith advices. That's how, that's what they do, because he's such an exceptional leader and a great teacher. He does a fantastic job, obviously, with all his accomplishments. He wants to share a few things with you, and a little video, and then we'll have the students introduce themselves.
This is my daughter, Lainey. She. Well, thanks for having us tonight. I just got a couple slides to kind of show you guys what we did this season. Show you a little, we bring the robots. Sometimes we throw off the robot here. So here's a little video that we're going to show, real quick. First, I'd like to thank our sponsors, not their name all off, but our, our team thrives off sponsorships. So Denso, GM, SCA, and NAMCIO are our heart and soul of 3098, along with all these other great companies. So I'd like to thank our sponsors for helping us be successful. So real quick, what is first? Well, they like to quote it as the hardest part of the other half, and it's also like the sport of the mind, okay? So it combines the excitement of sports and then science and technology into a game that's different every single season. I love this quote. It's as close to real-world engineering a student can be in at the high school level, because they're working directly with professional engineers that volunteer their own time to come coach and mentor our students, which is pretty amazing. Okay, so real quick, since we didn't bring the robot, this year we participated in Michigan State Championship, and we won it, and this is actually match number three of us winning the whole thing. It's actually a whole TV series of the RoboZone, the Fox Sports Detroit. So this is actually their, their rock, so match three.
Well, let's move into our last match of the day. This is the one we've been waiting for. We know the winner is going to be a champion and first in Michigan. And it's blue. The near side is blue, so.
So you can see this, our radio bot is. The first 15 seconds is full time, so this is all robots are moving all through programming. So there's no human controller. It's all code. There's students that'll to, to do that. Now that we're using TELIA, so there's two students with a drive team who are controlling the driver. There's one student driving it, and there's another student who is actively collecting their cube and making the elevator go up and down, and then, as you can see right here. And the how this game works out is that there's three switches or teeter counters, and for each time you own the teeter counter, you're gaining points. So you can see that we are in ownership of the, of the big teeter counter, and then we're also in ownership of our home and score, where we all switch. So we're just gaining points kind of, we play this for two minutes.
And 2586 stealing a cube from 67 after holding them in the corner for a while. 67 has not been contributing many cubes to that scale.
Yep, nice move by the Copperbots there.
About a 50-point lead for the Blue Lions.
Now, the Copperbots are just sitting like, what, you know, a little defensive posture that blocks the path.
Exactly. Exactly. That portal is key, because like I said, this is now scalable.
And a lot of our success through this season and especially at Michigan State Championship, if you look at the scale right there, our side of the scale is very neat. We replace things like pretty, pretty at will, whereas our opponent is kind of like throwing their cubes into their goal, making it a lot harder to stay. So last 30 seconds of match, there's always an ending. This was ending. There was a 16-inch bar on top of the scale, and the goal was to get two robots to climb on that bar. So this is how we achieve it. So 30 seconds, you can get as many as you want, so you have the board ready. And we have a hard drive up on us, and then we pull out a pre-learn puzzle, and then all three seconds, which is pretty awesome.
And they have no extra points there, whereas Blue's played all the power-ups against a nearly full ball.
They got the elevator right at the end there. They could get three, but it's time for them to be enough.
And I'm looking at all nine cubes in the blue ball. They, yeah, there it is going on our scoreboard.
Now, I know the video's not hard to see. There was 186 of teams there, but there was that weird weekend we got slammed in the high story, and they fled and tagged them. It was that day. So a lot of teams left early to beat the storms out of the winter. You were there.
When they were up in auto and got to play downhill, right, and played to their strengths.
And the Copperbot, nice, you know, slowing down 67 for a while, and then getting themselves into a nice defensive posture.
Yeah, and 3535, they played great for a last minute substitution, but.
So I think that's the easiest way to kind of explain, to show you in real time what we were doing. So many hours we're into building robots, programming the robots, and essentially performing how they do. These are just a couple pictures from the State Championship. We are, we have 40 kids on the team, and we have a drive team and pit crew, those are two, like the main roles that, that students can be a part of. Students earn those roles, just like if they were a starter in football, or basketball, or baseball. These students work to gain these same roles on our team. But all students participate. We scout, we develop apps, we do a lot of other things behind the scenes that aren't always seen in the big show, so to speak. So going back to Mission State Championship, yeah, we won it with our great partners. There's three state champions, ourselves, Team 4003 at Tri-Sonics, which are from the west side of the state, and then the first ever team in UP won, 2586, the Copperbots. They were from Cal U that up in the UP. So it's pretty cool to see the locations of all three teams throughout the state to work together to win. Another cool thing is that ourselves, we're a team of 40. Tri-Sonics is about a team of 35, Copperbots, seven kids and two mentors. So it's pretty cool to see that. That was a list of mentors, but I have, I have a good gang of mentors with our team. Like I said, all our mentors, they volunteer their own time. They come in here after work, many of them are professional engineers from GM Kawasaki, Classic Audio, SCA. And they come in on their own time to give back to our kids and see what we do. So on that note.
All right, let's, let's have you all meet the championship robotics team. So if you want to come down and come up to the microphone, say your name, what grade you're in. And if you're a senior, let us know what you're doing next.
My name is Myla Gusterson, and I'm in ninth grade.
My name is Shelby Lopizzi, and I'm a junior.
My name is Jito, I'm in ninth grade.
My name is Lily, and I'm in ninth grade.
My name is Michael Shider, I am sophomore.
I am Mason Bartle, and I am in ninth grade.
I am Joel McKnight, I'm a senior, and I'm going to be going to Michigan Technological University.
My name is Chase Oy, and I'm going to be in OCC, Open Community College.
My name is Jeremy, I'm a senior, I'm going to OCC.
My name is Alex Pumpkin, and I'm sophomore.
My name is Prada Craig, I'm a senior, I'm going to Kettering University.
I'm Ben Haskins, and I'm in, uh, eighth grade.
I'm Tony Oreo, I'm a junior.
My name is Jacob Rude, I'm an 11th grade.
My name is Eric Correll, I'm a math grade.
Great place to begin, and thank you very much for that. I'm going to move on now to the 2018 Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Bamblo. Not sure what else I can say. That is just fantastic. You know, as you know, the Waterford Foundation has a award that we give out every year. We switch years between elementary and secondary, so obviously this was the year for secondary, which means Mrs. Bamblo was up with all our high school and middle school teachers. So out of all of those teachers, and across the span of a couple of years of looking at the excellence that has gone on, she was selected. It was fantastic, because one of the nominations was from a student as well. So she has really touched the lives of students in her class. As somebody who goes to a lot of district events, I see the other people who go to events, and she is at most of the events, as I'm sure you know, as parents. She is, she is everywhere, not just supporting her students in mathematics, but supporting them in every single thing that they do. I want to read you a quote from Sandy Stapansky, who is a counselor at Kettering. I'm just going to read you one paragraph from her nomination. Says, "Monica is one of our best teachers, teaching math, a subject most kids have difficulty with. Monica never gives up on them, even though she lets them know that, even though she would let them know if she was disappointed in the quality of their work, but she believes that every student can succeed, and that students just have to put in the effort. She has had work before and after school. Many times I've seen her helping kids on her lunch. She works with some of my students who have very little understanding of math concepts, and still Monica never gives up on them, and will do her best to make a believer out of them too. Kids will tell me they're lost in math class, but they also normally add, Mrs. Bamblo thinks I can do it." What more can you do to help somebody, to give them that confidence? I want to thank you for all that you've done. I'd like the Waterford Foundation, if you want to come up and get a certificate, that we will, we'll give to you first on behalf of the Order of Education. And so thank you very much for all the work you've done. This is Karen Laswell from the Waterford Foundation, who wants to say a few words.
Yes. This is our 27th year, Lori, handing out this prestigious award of Teacher of the Year. We have a total of 12 fabulous nominees. Monica, it was an absolute delight getting to know you, getting to observe you in your classroom. As a teacher, she has achieved really the trifecta of respect and admiration. She's received it from her fellow teachers, she's received it from support staff, and she's received it from her students. Even students don't even have her in class. Monica knows them in the hallway. One of her students even told us that Mrs. Bamblo's day does not end when her classroom door closes. And as Steve mentioned, she is very involved in the community, at community events, et cetera. She's a mother, she's a grandmother, and this tiny little thing here is a former Marine. And if I could add one quick piece, a little part of that story showing her quick wit. When we announced her winning of the Teacher of the Year, they are totally surprised. We just all walk into her classroom, we have members of the board, we have members of our committee. One of those, my co-chair, Laurie Stapansky, our silent member here. And they all entered the room, and I saw this on video, unfortunately I wasn't there, but it appeared that it wasn't reversed as to who would speak first from this rambling group of adults that came into the room, as Monica's standing there, teaching probably AP calc or something in the middle of her classroom. And so there was this awkward silence, and just deadpan look, Monica says, "I told you they'd come to get me Monday." Well, we got you, Monica, and I'll let you go. Thank you for all you've done for the community, and congratulations.
There are famous people so far, she gave more than 90 exams with the Teacher of the Year, so we would, my job for nameplates? Congratulations, Monica. And those last students in the audience, we're going to move to budget and septic.
Is that Mr. Horbrook, the first information I can use on the public hearing? What follows the 2018-19 budget?
All right, well, once again, I need to question the order of how I fall in the agenda, because after all this greatness, we have to talk about a notice for the, for the budget, and the septic system, and the 1819 budget. But first steps are the, we have to publish in the newspaper, and you have that attached in your board packet. We will have an action item on the 7th of June, and it'll be published in the paper for a June 21st budget hearing, along with that will be the property taxes, the military, where we'll set the military.
Okay, on the septic systems.
All right, one of the last components of all the bits that went out and so forth when it comes to the Houghton Elementary renovation is going to be the septic system. At Houghton, it needs to be renovated as well, so we are out to bid for that.
Are there three septic systems at this building, and only over buildings?
This is the last building that has an actual septic system. It's the only building we have.
But is it one system or?
There's a couple of systems in there, but it's, it's all going to be replaced.
There's two of each, not one.
Is there any plans through the township to bring sewers through there? Or are there, I assume there's not any sewers now, right?
Correct. We would have to drill under Williams Lake Road and then under Elizabeth Lake Road. You'd have to go under two roads to connect to the system, and at this time, it's just not cost effective. In the future, we would anticipate, or hopefully we'll see, maybe in a 20-year time period, that possibly that the sewer system will run in front of the school down White Lake Road at some point. And then it would be advantageous for us to connect at that point. And then it would be advantageous for us to connect at that point.
Great. And, uh? 18-19 budget.
All right, let me, let me start with that, with a little introduction on, on this. Um, we have, uh, Bill and Danielle are going to presenting the board with eight different budget options this evening. Um, mathematically, I think we could get a whole lot of other options out of it, but we're just gonna present, uh, eight different combinations of the variables that, uh, need to be discussed and decided by the Board of Education. Um, we are, uh, in need of, of some direction from the board on each one of these different variables, so that we know which budget it is that needs to be worked on. Uh, we need to have that budget done in June, and, uh, so in order for them to get all the nuances done, how many light items?
15,000?
Just 15,000 light items, uh, we need, uh, we need this direction. So, uh, those variables begin with, uh, the estimation of student loss for next year. Um, the demographers tell us 300. We had bumped that up to 350 at our study session, uh, there was talk of 400. Um, I thought that the 400 was a consensus, was told that it wasn't, so one of the things we need to do is to decide, is it 350 or 400? Uh, they will present what those options look like with, uh, with both of those student numbers. Should we, uh, once that's done, should we make no adjustments? Uh, been suggested that we keep the number of teachers the same, uh, even if the number of students, uh, was reduced. Uh, that results in a, um, budget that would be under the 5%, uh, which, uh, one option to deal with that would be, uh, reduction in salaries across the board of .65%. If we did make the reductions, um, of teachers to match students, that results in a budget surplus, we need decisions on, uh, what happens with that surplus. Do we, uh, give that to employees in the form of raises? Uh, do we, uh, just add that to the fund balance? One of the only ways that the school district can raise revenue is through schools of choice. Uh, we have discussed adding 100, uh, schools of choice seats for next school year. Uh, that's something that we would need direction on, because that has, uh, a big impact on the budget, uh, and then we would want to know, um, again, what we would do with that revenue. Is that the revenue for, um, the fund balance, or is that given back to employees? We've had, um, discussion by some board members that we should cut administrative positions, and also, uh, the suggestion that we cut administrative wages. Uh, that's something that we need to discuss and know which direction, uh, we are going on that, uh, for the budget. The option that we recommend, uh, is administration is the most fiscally responsible, is to go with the 350 student loss, adjust teachers' numbers to match that, add 100 schools of choice, make no additional cuts, and, uh, give the entire surplus to, uh, our employee groups. I wanna remind the board that we've, uh, we're in the best position we've been in financially since right about 2003. Uh, since also right about that time, uh, this is the first time we've been in the position where we could give raises two years in a row, uh, over that time period. We've had a lot of time in there where we haven't given, uh, you know, anything at all for multiple years. And, uh, also in about that same time period, it's the first time, uh, that we've come to the board with a budget that does not involve cuts, uh, in order to arrive at a surplus. So we're, we're doing well financially, uh, but we do need direction from the board so that we can actually develop a budget, uh, that gets turned into the state. Uh, with that, I will turn it over to Bill and Danielle and present, uh, what each one of those budgets looks like in numbers.
Thank you. I don't expect the viewing audience to be able to see this, but I wanted to let you know that this PowerPoint will be on our website, uh, by tomorrow. Uh, you can pull it up under the board section of our website and you can view what these numbers are. The board, you have a separate sheet that has this, uh, presentation in front of you, and it's labeled in each column, uh, the options, optional and to, all the way through eight, as Dr. Wondolik had mentioned. So, start off with, uh, the items to discuss, let's just kind of, uh, repeat, uh, in the enrollment. Uh, we're gonna do teacher adjustments, schools of choice, fund balance, uh, or structural surplus. Uh, what we're gonna do with that structural surplus, so we can use it for negotiations, we can add to fund balance, and all those type of, uh, items. So let's dive in right in and show what, an enrollment decrease of 350 FTE equates to about $2.6 million. Or, uh, if we move to an enrollment decrease of 400 in our projections, it's about $2.9, almost $3 million. So we talked about teacher adjustments. Within the teacher adjustments, we can do zero, uh, we can do 14 if it's 350, and this is 25 students per, uh, classroom, or we do 16 at 400. Uh, the number's there, it's a million dollars, or a million one, uh, six, uh, for 16, uh, with the 400 teachers. Let, let me mention this, um, I know there's been discussion of, you know, doing nothing and, um, and working through the class size and so forth. Over the years, uh, we have, we've reduced, or we've, um, had a decline of 23% since oh two, oh three, school year of our student population. This will keep our teacher population in line with that 23% reduction. This is an election year, uh, you'll see in just a minute, uh, one of the lines we have in there is $228 more in revenue, but because it's an election year, um, we don't know what we're gonna get the following year, we might get zero. What's important to point out is, to be fair from an HR standpoint and our employee standpoint, is that we've been very successful all these years, for the most part, of attritioning ourselves through this. We've limited the layoffs, we've limited the, the impact on our employees. If we choose to go down the path of not reducing any teachers, it is a likelihood that if we don't get revenue from the state, you won't be doing 14 or 16, you'll be doing 28 or 32, and if you wait two more years beyond that, you'll be doing, uh, 48, as much, as many as 48 reductions in one year if the budget requires that to get you through a budget year, uh, to balance a budget. So it is a concern, uh, if you don't maintain, uh, your teacher-student ratio, uh, moving forward. Because at that point, you will be doing layoffs, you will be doing, um, uh, what I would prefer, personally think is harm to the employee groups, because if you do it systematically over a period of time, you have the attrition to make it happen, as the least amount of impact on your staff. One of the options presented is the school choice, it had 100 FTE, 788,000, but we would just, from a conservative standpoint, uh, offset that with four FTE and teacher, uh, additional teachers, it's 528,000, is the net impact on that. There's other, other items, because if you, if you run through this budget and you wanna make sure that, you know, it all adds up to what we get to in the bottom line, there are other items that are really not part of the discussion, that we need guidance from the board. So the one is the foundation allows a $228 per student, it's almost $2 million. Uh, and then we also, the P18 is our special ed, uh, local, uh, or countywide, mileage should increase about $120,000. Uh, we always have normal retirements of $300,000, we have, um, some employee turnover savings of $200,000, healthcare participation, uh, decline of 100. And then, but offset on the healthcare side is we also have, we are a hard cap district, and so, when, what that means is that each year, uh, the state adjusts the hard cap by a local CPI in the metro area, so that would cost us $175,000 or more. That's a $2.5 million net, uh, uh, budget impact, uh, to the good. So, we have an enrollment decrease of 350. If we have a $5.1 million beginning fund balance, we do nothing, we'll end with a $5,032,000 fund balance. If we adjust by the 14 teachers, we'll have a $6 million fund balance. If we add school of choice and adjust by 10 teachers, that would be the 14 minus the four that we would add back for school of choice, we could end up at a fund balance of almost $6.6 million. And again, we could discuss, uh, further as to what to do with the difference between the 5.1 and the 6.6. 400 teacher, or 400 students. Again, our beginning balance is 5.1 million, we do nothing, that fund balance will go to 4.6. If we adjust our teachers, uh, by 16 FTE, it'll be 5.8 million. If we adjust our teachers by 12, again, 16 minus the four for school of choice, uh, we would be at $6.3 million. From a fund balance perspective, uh, this budget exceeds treasury rules regardless of the options presented. Uh, they require 5% of unrestricted general fund revenues. Um, we always like to have a target, though, of 5%, uh, maintain, our goal is to maintain at least a 5% fund balance, which is the 5.1 million dollars. Here's our fund balance history, back in, uh, 2012, 13. You can see when we had $5 million fund balance, and then we dipped, uh, immediately to a $1.1 million fund balance, and we've been building back ever since. Uh, we have a projected fund balance, this is the budgeted, uh, fund balance of 5.1 million for this year. We do believe we are in, obviously we're in mid-May, uh, we're progressing very well, and, uh, we believe that it's gonna be $5.5, $5.8 million dollars, because we do have a $500,000 contingency that is built into the budget. Uh, and as long as, uh, we never have to use that contingency, that will roll the fund balance naturally by 500,000 every year. And right now, we feel that, uh, we will not be using that contingency, and we may very welcome in better than expected by 500,000, above that 500. So our recommendation is to go with the 350 decline in enrollment. Reduce the 14 teachers, have school of choice of 100, which would add four teachers back, so that'll be a net decrease of 10 teachers. This equates to a 6.5, almost 6.6 million dollar fund balance. Then we can use the surplus amounts above the beginning fund balance for contract negotiations, increased fund balance, or items like that. So I'm gonna turn this back over to John and, um, have a board discussion on, um, the decisions that need to be made.
So we need to give the administration some direction on the budget, so what I'd like to do is like, go through each item individually, and then entertain a motion, not a vote, so that we can provide clear direction on where, uh, the administration needs to go.
Mr. President, are you asking for a motion for each individual item separately?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the first item I think we should address is the, uh, should we project an enrollment decline of 350 or 400 students? Now open up for discussion. Again, can you kind of, and I know we know, but for the people listening, when we're talking about a decrease of 350 students, we're not talking about 350 kids walking out the door and going somewhere else. It's less kids we have. But how are we coming up with that number? How are we coming up with 350 kids we will have less next year?
So that's a really good question. What we have is, um, and it's important to point out, we do have a difference between our incoming kindergartners and our exiting seniors. And that difference is mostly in this number. Uh, I would like to point out that in the last two to three years, we've increased in our kindergarten population coming in. So it's an important point to note that the kids are not just walking out the door, but we do have a difference from the years, um, past, that, uh, this bubble is moving through, and it'll take a while for it to move through. Um, but this is our graduating class versus our incoming class. To come up with a number, uh, we have internal, uh, projection, we have, um, Stanfred, um, it's Fred Gavovich, uh, consulting services that, they do, he does it for almost all districts in the state, and then we also have middle cities projections. We pull those projections together, and as, uh, Dr. Wondolik said, uh, we're really around 300, but we put 50 extra in there as precautionary measures, uh, for the other issues that have been coming up.
Have we, in the last few years, how are we, how are we faring compared to what we projected each year? Are we, are we, and I agree, to go a little more to be safe? Are we continually coming under by a little, by a lot? Are we actually going over more than what we projected, or how are we, how's the last three or four years gone?
Last three or four years, we've come in better than expected.
Okay. Mary?
Yeah, um, and I know we had talked at the other meeting, um, at Crary that wasn't, um, on camera, but we had talked about how, where I'd learned that day, that, um, this budget shortfall, that, or this enrollment shortfall from the graduating seniors being a higher number than our kindergartners is gonna go on for, you said, about five years. So we haven't, so we have a, I guess I was looking at this, this seems like just, uh, there's no long-term strategy in this. Um, I think this budget, you know, relies on us, it completely relies on us getting 100 school of choice kids, like, that's what it relies on. So I'm just concerned about that, that this is just a, that we're not thinking long-term, knowing that right now we have shortfalls coming for the next five years.
I think that's an important point. Um, we talked about it, and I think you mentioned that the last, uh, the last board meeting is that, uh, our projection's five years out. And that's basically part of my point is to, when you talk about teacher reductions, it's to maintain the pace, because we know that that's coming, so our long-term plan is to continue to make sure that we match, um, uh, that, that change in the population and stay with it, and not get ourselves to collect by delaying and then waiting three years and then having to do one big bulk. Um, again, it wouldn't be fair for our staff to do that.
And I think it probably, I mean, this is the 350, so I'll say this kind of for the teacher reduction.
John?
I know that at the study session, I was actually, I think, the person that asked to have it bumped up, and, um, and I have thought long and hard about that. And in all other things, we trust data, and the data tells us that 350 is already a very conservative number. Um, so I, I am absolutely supportive of reducing the budget that we modified during our study session to have it be moved back to the 350, recognizing we already added 50 to what the three separate entities that we rely on to give us data, and also acknowledging that we've been so close every year, with the exception of one year, in the 10 years that I've been on the board in that estimate, um, which is an excellent track record. So I feel very comfortable with the 350 number, and we will be very supportive of that change.
Thank you. Heather, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I just wanna make sure I don't forget you, because I can't see your hand or, so I have to. Did you?
So I'm completely supportive of 350, it's, it's really conservative enough, and, um, as John indicated, you know, our track record is, um, really good in that respect, so I'm comfortable with 350.
Heather, can you have a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we give direction to the budget to have the, uh, the count for student reduction established at 350.
Support. If there is any further comments or discussion? All those in favor? Heather, can you give me a verbal?
I'm raising my hand.
Thank you. Opposed motion passes 6-0. To bill work with 350. Next, student reductions of 14, uh, FTE.
Teacher reduction.
Sorry. Teacher reductions. Any comments or questions on teacher reductions? Mary?
I do, yes. Um, I think, Bill, when you were talking, you said, you said a number, and I'm, can you refresh what it was? You said 23% reduction of students over?
Since oh two, oh three.
Since oh two, oh three. Um, has that, I guess what bothers me about this scenario that you laid out today, um, I know you were, we had asked for, I had asked for options of, other options other than that, and even options within the teachers. Um, but this to me, having it go from zero reductions of teachers, um, to 14 or 16 doesn't seem like options. Um, seems like, obviously, zero is so extreme in one way, that you're getting, you know, pushed into, and I'm not saying that literally, but there's just the, I mean, obviously the zero is, it is not, um, the way it's presented here is not an option. Um, I think what bothers me is the reduction, I've said this before, of, we've had reduction of teachers, reduction of students, for at least four years, five years, probably longer, and reductions aren't reflected in any other segment. It just is completely at the building level, um, and I, I just, I don't understand that. I was, I'm very disappointed that, that there weren't other options, um, in central office and other options. We have 7 million of unchecked spending that, I don't even, I don't even know how this, we don't know, no one on the board knows how it's, how it's done, um, that in a, I just can't believe, I just can't, excuse me.
No, but we need to stay focused on the, the policy that we're talking about right now.
I know.
The question is, the question before us is, do we support the reduction?
Quit interrupting, guys, you gotta quit interrupting.
I know the question. What I'm talking about is, we're talking about teacher reductions, and that's all that's placed in front of us, our teacher reductions, that's it. Like, I can't believe of a $100,000 budget, that that is the only option. And as parent, you know, the- And as parent, you know the only thing that matters are the wonderful, wonderful teachers that we have there. And having more of them and then having zero cuts anywhere else, it just logically doesn't make sense. If students and teachers just keep going down, but this thick band doesn't move and just not seeing the proportion, I would expect to have seen, okay, here, you know, a little bit out of this budget, a little bit out of that budget to help. But there's, it's not, it's just, and to say it's not a reduction in teachers is not, is not a cut in teachers is not being truthful as well because we're losing 16 teachers. And I think that this, this display to us, zero, do nothing, it actually says do nothing, or go to 14 or 10. And I don't know, I just, and then no other option of what would be, what would be able to make up the money except for taking out of teacher raises, which again, I think puts us in the spot where it's, it's, this is not how I think this should be done, but.
Bill, do you have the data on the cuts we made generally across the district?
Yes. Administrative ranks since this period of time that we're talking about has been almost 40%.
What's the period of time?
'02, '03 to today. That is when we've, we've been through this, like in better terms, economic crisis in the state of Michigan when it comes to public education funding. We've reduced almost 40% of our administrative staff. Our secretaries are down 33%, our custodians are down almost 30%, our maintenance crews are down 32%, our drivers are down 33%, our mechanics are down 43%, and our teachers are down 23%. All of these other groups are cuts. The teachers have been reductions at the pace of the student decline. They have not had, we, our class sizes are the same as they were 20 years ago. In fact, in elementary and high school, they're actually better. As mentioned earlier, if you, if you don't keep up with this pace with the teacher reductions, the loss in students, and if we don't obtain more money from Lansing, we're going to put ourselves in a position to where we're going to have to lay out 48 teachers to 50 teachers all in one swoop to balance a budget regardless of administration, secretaries, custodians. We're going to put ourselves in that type of position. We've always been, our budgets have been focused on the classroom. And that's why you've seen these huge reductions in these other groups. And that's where we're at today. I can't say it enough about the administrative ranks. We're down 40%.
Rob?
As, as one of two board members, I've sat here since the '02, '03 and going through the pain of, what are we cut? First couple of years, I thought it was kind of nice because we got rid of, I feel, some fat. But it started getting tougher and tougher this year not to have to cut anything. It's, I was just so excited. But it makes no sense to keep a teacher in a classroom that has no kids in it. That's, that's what it basically equates to is, why would I keep 16 classrooms open with a teacher in it with no kids in it? When the kids go, the teacher goes. It's, it's common sense to me. This is something I do know that you could use it some other way, but this is the way it's always been done since we've been making the cuts that have been hard and tough. But it's fair. They're not always right, they're not always easy, but it's the fair way to do it. If you have less students, you have less teachers. To me, I don't see the, not understanding that aspect of it. It's common sense for me. Thank you.
Joan?
I just wanted to add a couple things up. What was before us was either 14 teachers or 16 teachers and that was dependent on a 350 student decline or 400 student decline. We've already established that we'll go with the 350 number, so we're talking the 14 teachers. I think it also is important to note that if that decline of 300, this is, this is, this is two sides of a balance sheet. It's saying if we are going to, if we lose 350 students, we would then reduce the corresponding teachers for those classrooms. But the corollary to that is if we don't lose 350 students, we will still need those teachers. So it is a budget based on projections. And if in fact, the 350 student decline is not what we encounter, then we would not have a reduction of 14 teachers. It would be the corresponding number to ensure that we maintain class sizes as we have. So I think that's an important distinction to make as well. It is a projection and it works both ways.
I just am clarifying that if we're losing 350 students and 16 teachers, it seems that services above them would be reduced too because you have 16 less teachers to serve, you have 350 less students. And I understand it's not a one-to-one correlation and, but I just, it does, it doesn't make sense to me, so.
To you, but to me it does because we have that.
I'm expressing what doesn't make sense to me.
We have cut the administration, we have cut the generators, we have cut them people. You're not understanding, I'm trying to help you understand. I don't think I can, so I'm trying.
I need you to.
Okay, okay. I'm trying to encourage as much space possible without.
I'm not trying to talk directly to anyone, he keeps talking directly to me.
I know. You don't understand, I'm trying to help you.
Joan?
I said, okay, enough of you guys. You're adults.
President Helskoff, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm trying to balance between the TV and the phone and there's a delay. So I'm trying to figure out which is easiest to pay attention to and it appears to be my phone. So correct me if I'm wrong, because sometimes it would fade out. Is part of, are part of those, that number 14, are, what part of those might possibly be by attrition through retirements and things like that?
Yeah, that was Bill's example that as the normal attrition happens in our district, which is about 14, 16 teachers, the natural reduction is picked up by people who are voluntarily leaving the district.
Okay, sorry, I think it kind of cuts out here on the phone, so I can't do this.
Do you need to clarify me, Bill, or?
Yeah, I just, I mean, well, certainly will attrition be more than that, definitely. But there will be pockets of people who, you know, that rather the other way around.
Sure, we understand the problem. It's like one specialized teaching position, you can line up 100 people, but if you need that one person, you gotta keep that one person.
Right.
Correct. We have 10 retirements right now.
Well, and I agree with Mr. Patricia. I mean, if you don't have the kids in the classroom, then you don't need the teachers. So, and it's been, it's been made crystal clear how much we've reduced in all the other administrative goals over the years. So I don't think there's really any question there.
And I echo that. I mean, I feel, I feel good that, I hate to call it a healthy budget, but compared to the last eight, 10 years, it's a healthy budget. And it's done by whatever's facing you now. You need to address the problem as soon as possible. So naturally, the staff gets reduced, so. entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we establish or give direction to finance relative to the 2018, 2019 budget to include the 14 teacher reduction as it relates to the 350 student reduction.
Support. It's been moved in supporters. Are there any other questions or comments or discussion? All those in favor? Heather?
I agree, I agree.
Opposed? Motion passes by one. That we instruct the administration to correlate the 14 FTE with the 350 student population. Next item is school of choice. Recommendation is 100 FTE students. Any comments or questions?
I'll start out, this is a, I think, this is probably one of the biggest, one of the biggest discussions that at least since I've been on this board for seven years comes up is school of choice. We've heard a lot of examples why it's good. We've heard from parents who are parents of kids who are school of choice and those parents are PTA presidents, they volunteer, they coach, they do so much, yet they don't live in Waterford School District. Their kids are good students, they're involved, they get good grades, they raise those test scores, but they don't live in Waterford. So there's a lot of good kids who would want to go here, who don't live in Waterford. I guess my biggest problem is, and we've talked about it a lot of time, is as those kids are coming in this door, how many of our Waterford kids are going out this door? And that's my biggest concern. You know, I, I don't know. It's a, I get it from a money standpoint, it brings additional revenue, but we also have to realize it's not always about the almighty dollar. You know, a lot of times there are things that are more important than the almighty dollar. So this is one that, you know, I just, we, we opened up school of choice for kindergarten unlimited. We opened up, I believe, 100-spot school of choice last year. Was it last, two years ago?
Last year.
It was two, two years ago.
It wasn't last year.
So it was.
Did you vote on last school year?
Last year was the.
Well, I think we probably voted on it three years ago, so you're right. So that would have been last school year.
Yeah, we started, right, exactly. And we've added 20 school of choice kids for the STEM program. And I think we've done that last year and I think we've talked about doing it again this year, maybe we already have. So I don't, I don't think I am, I think it's one too that I would like to hear from community people. You know, what does the community think? You know, if the community is, is good with it, then, you know, that's my sir. That's, that's who I'm here to listen to. I'm not here to listen to people who live outside this district. I'm here to listen to the people who live in this district. And so I guess I'm kind of the point where I'm not really for it, but if there was support for it from the community, I certainly then, you know, I would back it. But I think our biggest thing is we also have to, you know, realize how many kids might we lose if we're bringing in kids? I know you had mentioned if we brought in these 100 kids, about an additional $528,000, but that's if nobody leaves as a result of that. And if kids leave as a result of that, that number is just going down, down, down. So, you know, we, we've let in, you know, 140, we've opened up 140 spots outside of kindergarten, kindergarten's unlimited. I think at some point, you almost have to say, okay, you know, enough's enough. Now that being said, I know other districts are wide open. You know, West Bloomfield or Brandon or other, I mean, they're wide open. So again, I just, I don't know if it's good, I don't know if it's bad, I'm mixed, but I would be open to hearing from community, you know? This is, they should have a say in it.
I have a question. When we opened it up to 100 schools of choice, what did you reference? Did we get 100 students?
Yeah, we had, it was around 175 or so applicants and so we accepted 100 of those.
Okay, and then for the STEM, when I was here, we opened it up to 20 and only?
We had five.
Five because of the requirements of being able to get into the STEM program?
We did a study on those, those 100 and they, compared to the, you know, general Waterford population, their, their scores, their grades were better. Their behavior was, was less, but their absences were more, which maybe was not unexpected in that way. But they, they were, you know, as, as good or better performing than the resident students.
Schools of choice bothers me. I especially just K, K-12, just wide open. Kindergarten was a different story. I was comfortable with that even as a, as a principal as well, but the K, the K-12 bothers me. It also bothers me that this budget is based on schools of choice. And so like to, just in, you know, to run our district, we have to bring people in from the outside to run our district. The, the other side could be to make our budget fit. The loss of, of the students and the teachers that we're doing, make our expenditures fit. I cannot believe in a $100 million budget, we don't have more options. So, yeah, the schools of choice just, I don't, doesn't sit well, K-12, wide open for me.
Joan?
I want to make sure for clarity purposes, the budget is, is not based on school of choice. There are eight options in front of us. We narrowed that to four. We've now narrowed that to two. And of those, both of them have a net increase in our fund balance. So of those options that are sitting in front of us, regardless of the school of choice. I, I struggle with school of choice, I always have. My colleague, Mr. Patricia, always rips me about it and he says, at least you're consistent. And I, I know that we have, I think about, I guess I'm not sure what the total number of school of choice kids is. Last time I asked, we have about 500.
It's about four, it's a little over 400 to be a total. K-12.
Right, and I'm fiercely protective of Waterford and the Waterford community and the Waterford schools and maintaining a Waterford identity for our schools and for our community. And at some point, as my colleague, Mr. Pickett, indicated, there's a tipping point. At some point, when do we take the sign off the administration building and call this something else that isn't Waterford? And so I, I struggle with this. I, I like to see us, it is, it is more revenue on the surface, but there are additional costs. We have to have teachers for those students. And there are also additional costs if we, if we look at people that then, as Mr. Pickett said, leave the district. There's also a cost that you can't put a dollar sign in front of, and that's the community. It's what it means as a local school board to have a local district that you know your neighbors, you know who you're going to school with, you know the parents that are in the school, you know, the kids know one another, the kids, there's a, there's a very, it's very difficult to put a dollar sign in front of that. That being said, I also never want to, I never want to deny a child an opportunity to have the amazing Waterford education. So, and I also recognize that extra funds would allow us to do more. My approach really is, again, and I use this phrase, is to be leaner and meager, is to focus on what we do best and to retain the amazing students that we have and to service the Waterford community. So I am not, not in support of the school of choice.
Mr. Helskoff?
Sure. Heather?
A question. I agree with what everybody's saying. My, I guess two questions. Do we have any kind of data available tonight as to how our school of choice plays out in terms of grade levels at this point? And I don't mean to put you on the spot, so if you don't have it right now, that's fine. But I guess my question would be, could we limit that? Do we, what, what kind of criteria can we put in place for that additional 100? I would feel a lot better if we kept it to, say, K through three or a lower, a lower early childhood when we get them from the beginning and can kind of mold that education versus them coming in as a junior. I think it puts us in a little bit out of shape if we're taking them as they're younger. Can we, can we put criteria in place to only do K through two and K through three? And if so, of those 100, how many of them would be of that age level? Just maybe, I guess.
Unfortunately, I do have that data. I have a chart with all the grade levels and where our numbers are. Unfortunately, I didn't bring that with me this evening. But yes, the stipulation of grade levels, even the first group of students that we had with the advanced achievement endorsement, we can open up specific programs, that's what Clarkston does, they just open up advanced programs. And so then there's a criteria and external students would have to meet that exact same criteria that internal students would meet. So we can put all sorts of stipulations within our school's choice resolution, grade level or even as specific as that, advanced achievement endorsement or STEM, you know, something like that. So yes, we can do whatever the board wants to. And the 100 number is what we did last time. It doesn't mean that's what we need to do this time.
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't want to just see it become our fallback every time we plan a budget. And I get everything that we're talking about right now. I just don't want to see this become an habitual thing every year. And if we can somehow limit that to early childhood, I think overall as a district, we'd be in much better shape. I, I've always as well been protective of our, you know, our Waterford kids and not a really huge fan of schools of choice. Flip side of that is there are kids that come here, as school of choice kids, because they really want to be here and they really want to work hard. So there's really kind of two sides to looking at that. I just would be cautious that we don't make this an annual thing and that somehow we create a comfortable criteria to have in place to, to make that happen.
Joan?
Just, go ahead, Mr. Patricia.
I'm sorry, Rob.
Yeah, I know. I, and again, my understanding that the 100 will basically be filling where we're short. We have classrooms that are in need of students, something like that. It isn't just going to be the first 100 kids and wherever they fall, I, from what I understood.
If limited, limited schools of choice allows us to determine.
Pick and choose. We have, we have shortages in this class, we need a couple more kids here, a couple more kids. That type of thing, it is just across the board.
Pick grade levels, pick schools, like, you know, Donaldson Hills is packed. I wouldn't want to have kids in Donaldson Hills, you know.
So we're not just opening the doors. We would be strategically putting them where we are short to fill classrooms, to give us the extra money to give to our teachers or to. or to, to our staff. But I don't think it has the supports only to move on.
So I struggle with schools of choice because we live in a very competitive public school arena. Everybody around us aggressively goes after school of choice. Here's what I tell people, the 100 kids that we are saying no to are going to another school of choice. And the parents who are saying, I'm leaving, are going to that school that took the 100 kids that we wouldn't take. So I, here's where I struggle with it, I think I've said it before. I get approached by many people who've been longtime active, involved in our schools, for whatever reason, they moved out of the district, for whatever reason, and want to stay in the district. And we can address that by opening up school of choice, and my understanding is, it's still a lottery, right? You can't say, I can only take these particular families, you have to open the number wide enough to hope that you catch the 30 or 40 kids that you want to keep.
Yeah, the law allows us to do things. We can go for siblings, if somebody could come in through kindergarten, we can, we are allowed to select siblings over, you know, the rest of the people. And then again, for programs, for specific programs, we can select people that meet the criteria.
So we can, we can select some type of criteria and the kids have to meet that? Because one, one of the things that I...
It would have to be, it would have to be a program that already has the criteria.
So we can't say anything, their grade point average has to be a certain, they've never had expulsions, anything?
That, that's part of a law, they can add, we, we get their behavior record and we can exclude those for sure with expulsions and the suspensions depends on what, what type of suspension it's for.
Because there, there are, and I, I talked about this, I think, last year or the year before, there are instances, and I, I coach, and I had a, a young lady on my softball team two years ago, who, her and her two brothers had been Watford students their entire life, she was in 10th grade, and her mom, you know, they were renting a house and the landlord decided to sell it, and they had to move. And they moved one street, literally, outside of Watford. And because of that, she could no longer go to Watford schools. Her brother was going to be a senior that coming school year, she was going to be a junior, and she couldn't go here. And I think that's the year we opened up for 100 spots. And that was hard to tell somebody like that note, when you've gone to Watford schools for your entire life, you know, from kindergarten, and, and you're going to be a senior, and, and you moved one street outside of Watford, it's bad. That's hard to say you can no longer go here. Now, again, correct me if I'm wrong, couldn't we allow that type of scenario or those type of kids to go here if their new district allowed it?
Correct. If, there's a thing called a re-lease, and a, a district, a resident district can re-lease a student to another school district, and the school of choice law is not impacting that.
But there are some districts that won't do that because they want...
There are several districts that won't, that won't ever sign a lease, yes.
I have a fellow question. So on the budget that you presented, if it was 100 schools of choice kids, it would be 788, 788,000, less the teachers, so it'd be 528,000. So if, if we, I'm just if-ing, if we voted where we're not going to do the schools of choice, the 528 in this proposal comes out of potential teacher raises. There's like, there's no other place in the budget we could get 528 dollars, or 28,000 dollars. I guess I'm just asking, is this how, how this goes?
Well, not necessarily. There's many things in the budget that you can impact, that the fund balance is one.
Right. So our choices are, it has to come out of fund balance or teacher salaries. There's no other option.
It isn't just teacher salaries, it's all staff and benefits, and we're 85% staff benefits, paid salary and benefits. So there's very little place else you're going to pull that from.
15%?
If we eliminate transportation, can we save a bunch of money?
Yep. That's one place we could do it, right.
But that, you're right, that's an option.
That's an option. I mean, if you want to talk options, there's a bunch of silly options that you can do to generate money, but at some point, common sense has to dictate it.
I don't think silly is what I'm asking for. I'm thinking smart.
Okay, there's a question, we'll try to answer it.
From the standpoint of the 15% that's remaining, that's outside of salaries and benefits, much of that is already, it's already been reduced. There's things in there that are already fixed, whether it's gasoline for the buses, whether it's gas for the, or the utilities for the electric, the water, those are all fixed. Kids are still, still going to provide that to the building. So when you really get into the, there's, we've, over the years, since we've cut probably more than, I don't know, almost a hundred million dollars in made reductions by this board since '02 or '03, we've really eliminated much of anything that's in there to do that. It's going to, it'll have to be personnel.
So the 85%?
Mm-hmm. I have a quick question.
Sure.
So, so if I'm remembering this correctly, and Bill, I might not be, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but we've, we've recovered from pretty dire straits and we did that in a very short amount of time, and we did that through some systemic financial changes that were made. So though our fund balance right now is, is above 5%, those systemic changes, if we didn't bring in these school of choice kids, we would still expect, all other things being equal, for that fund balance to increase year over year as a result of the previously made systemic changes?
We, we do, yes, we do have, right now, we have a 500,000 at a minimum, a $500,000 structural surplus.
Right. So, so Mary, I know that you mentioned the fund balance and, and I know it's an area we all are very nervous about, so I appreciate you bringing it up, and, and that is really the option here. And so I, I do take comfort, I think, understanding that that systemic $500,000 from all the hard work that was done, we would expect to see an improvement in our fund balance next year, even if we don't bring in school of choice kids, for example, so.
Heather, I'm going to, well, I entertain a motion if there's anybody thinks that there's a motion on school of choice.
Do we need a motion one way or another to give finance direction?
I think we could entertain that, a motion that keeps school of choice kids as they currently exist.
Is this something I need to vote on tonight? I mean, could we, one of the things I ask again is I'd love to hear from people in this community. You know, I mean, we, we have kind of, I think, a mixed board, some people are for it, some are against it, and, and I'm not so much for it, but like I said, if the people I represent, if they're for it, then darn, I better support it. It's just trying to give them direction tonight on the budget, so.
I think if you ask 95% of people, you're going to get 95% different answers, so.
I don't know. I think this one's cut and dry. I think you're either really for it or really opposed to it.
I guess I, I will make a motion that we do not entertain opening up school of choice to an additional 100 students in, in order to provide direction to the finance department for the 2018, 2019 budget.
Support it. Has been moved and supported, any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Not opening.
Correct, not opening. Opposed? Heather, yes or no?
I'm trying to understand, it cuts out, so what exactly is the motion again, sorry?
The motion was to not add revenue, anticipated revenue into our budget as a result of adding 100 school of choice students. So it's, and that's not saying we're not going to open up for an additional 100 students.
Okay.
Hold on, what was that?
Okay, I'm trying to count Heather's vote.
Okay. So that way she can't vote down when she's voting?
I, I support it, sorry. Or I agree.
So to clarify, I was a yes. Joan was a yes, Heather was a yes. Mary was a yes. And so the motion passes forward to...
Yes.
So there will be no...
Two is five to one.
Five to one.
No, I vote against.
Right, if you go one.
Oh, I vote ahead for it, yes.
Well, you want to be...
Yeah, I, I would like to have more time to discuss that one.
Well, I will say, I think we can revisit it.
Can we? That would be awesome.
We have a school of choice, we can pass that as part of policy, it's not...
And if we need it, yes, there is.
Exactly.
And I encourage people in this community, if you feel strongly about it one way or the other, contact us, contact the board.
What if you're not part of this community? You want to send the kids here, that's who you might be hearing from. So again, listen to people.
That's okay.
Whether you want to close the building or not, it isn't a popular thing.
No, they can contact me too. Like I said, there was one parent who was a great parent.
Thank you. The next topic is administrative cuts or wage reductions for administrative personnel. Any discussion on this?
What kind of administrative cuts or wage reduction are we talking?
Well, I'm looking at zero.
No, but what is, so it's either zero or what?
Whatever you, someone wants to propose and we'll discuss.
I mean, also, I mean, I'll start, I've been in the district long enough to know that, well, earlier, what was, protect the classroom, protect the classroom, protect the classroom, we've done that. We've also said, we'll treat everybody fair. We say that to administrators, and there's been at least two times since I've been on the board, that they took a cut, nobody else took a cut, or they didn't get a raise, somebody else didn't get, which not, to my opinion, was not treating them fair. I say this again, I probably call this a healthy budget. If there's money to give to one employee, we need to look to give, spread that money to all employees, regardless of their position, pay grade, time on, it needs to be fair and equal across the district.
Beautifully said. I 100% agree, I could not agree more. I know, I do not want to discuss cuts to administrators, especially if we can recognize where we've been and that they've already been reduced by, by 40%, which far exceeds essentially the 23% cut that would go along with our student attrition.
Sure. Okay. This is exactly why we wanted to, the three of us, Mr. Piggott and Ms. Torres, and I wanted to have a bunch of discussions in February, starting this conversation, having options laid out. Here we are, backed up, it's May whatever, and, you know, we were telling us we have three more meetings, and it's just, this is, to me, not, not the healthy way to discuss this. My vision is, is about looking at our, our district as being a healthy entity for looking at five years, we know we're going to have reductions, reductions, reductions of students, we know this is coming. We've had reductions for at least three years, probably more, and, but we haven't really changed our, not building level, not administrators, not people at the building, but central office, support, like bigger staff. I'm also thinking about, like, we used to be a, like, 10,000, 12,000 students district, 16, and it was the same, same structures, like, there's very few, fewer people up there in, in central office. I, I know, thank you.
It's hard though.
Thank you. Just, just listen. And then, I'm looking at different structures of different districts, I've just been looking online. Why is our structure the, like, the holy grail? What if, what if I, I worked in Howell for, what, for two years and principals reported, reported directly to the superintendent? That person, he was our supervisor, he evaluated us, there wasn't an extra layer. They were 7,500 students, like, so it's not a ridiculously different structure. Their, every department was structured differently. So we are just marching forward with what we've had, saying that we've reduced in years past, but I'm saying, this is what the February top would have been, like, what is out there? What are other options? Could we be leaner, could we be meaner? And then, that would allow for more, more things for the people that, that would still remain for salaries, more things for fund, more money for fund balance. I just don't think saying, I think it's very short sighted, just saying we're keeping everything as it is, period, and just, and knowing that we have what we have coming down the pipe. And that's my opinion.
So you don't support at this point any administrative cuts or wage reductions?
What has been proposed by our...
I think, I think the administration's clearly the message from where I said, that the majority of the board has said to them, do not cut administrative staff and do not wage, or reduce their wages. So if there's somebody up here on the board that is not representing what I think Watford feels, then tonight's the time to say, what do you want, cut in wages or staff?
We did this at the last meeting at Carrery, I talked about having options, that's what, that's why having a...
We're telling Bob, Bill, we don't want options.
But you are, but I'm, I'm, you're asking me what my opinion is, and I'm saying that this is why we, we should have in February started, and, you know, I got, I got told that it was ridiculous to start talking in February, but here we are, we have to decide this tonight, otherwise, you know, we can't get it done in time. And that's like pushing us into this corner, and it's very frustrating.
You understand that we still don't have from the state how much money we're getting per student now on May 17th, but these people need to develop a budget. So it's a working budget, but there's no way in February they're even close to knowing what the state was giving. So how would they propose what, how to balance a budget if they don't know what the state's giving? We're basically a state operation, we most of our money from the state.
I'm talking about the structure of, of how we have things set up, that we could look at, we should look into that. What if, what if principals report directly to K, then what doesn't need to be there? What are, what are extra things? I don't know, I'm...
Then I'll entertain a motion on that.
To have, to have them figure that out?
No, to what? To come back with administrative cuts or wage reductions? I don't know what a motion is. You said we already have a majority, so why don't we just move on? I mean, if, you said the majority of the board isn't for it, so I think we should move on and not even discuss it if the majority of the board feels that way.
That's why we're voting tonight, so everybody knows where everybody stands, right?
So Heather, is that, is there need to vote for? I mean, if you said, you said the majority of the board is not for it, so why vote?
I need some clear direction.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
I, I need some clear direction.
Everything makes sense now.
Sorry, Heather, I mean, cut you off.
That's okay. I, we have been talking about this forever, we had a study session, and I don't even know how long it went, there was the opportunity to discuss all those specifics that you wanted, and I am absolutely not in favor of cutting administrators or any sort of pay, so.
Rob?
I want to point out that it's, I'm not again, or for cutting any particular group, either the administrators, the teachers, bus drivers, it's, it's a group, I'm not looking to attack any group, it's all for one, one for all. Sometimes it isn't fair, it isn't right, but that's the way we should be operating. So I would like them to make a motion that we, never mind, I'll have Joan do it, because she does it better.
Well, just want to point out that this budget does affect one group only, teachers.
I make a motion that we give direction to the finance department relative to the 2018, 2019 budget to make no reductions to the pay or to the administrative staffing positions.
So we don't want to change that to all positions?
We're talking about all of theirs.
Oh, I thought you said you'd rather make it for all across the board.
Why don't we, Mary, maybe you'd like to make the motion on what you'd like to see, maybe that's the best way, because I know you felt strongly about that, maybe you make the motion and then we'll see if there's support for that.
I support it, I'll vote for it.
Sorry.
I just, I actually not going to even accept the premise of what's happening up there. Like administrative cuts, wage reduction, I, you know, I wasn't the one that said, that talked about wage reduction at that last meeting. Administrative cuts, how, you know, what, what's the term, rightsizing? We're cutting the teachers, but you guys aren't saying we're cutting teachers, you're saying we're just reducing through attrition. You know, so you, you word what you're doing, what, what's happening with teachers as this pleasant thing, and then you put up there, you know, administrative cuts to paint me as, as something that isn't reasonable, but it is very reasonable to consider, to have options laid out by our finance people. What would happen if we restructured? How could we restructure? Having less administrators, what would it look like? Maybe we won't choose it, but it's, it was an option. I asked for it, it didn't happen, so I, I'm not, we don't have to do a motion on it tonight because we're running out of time and...
We need, we need clear direction.
I think we need clear direction to the...
Well, I'm not going to make a motion.
I'm going to take your side.
About 600?
600 teachers.
Gal, reintroduce my motion, do I at least state it?
Please.
I make a motion that we give clear direction to the administration and the finance department relative to 2018, 19 budget, and that direction is that we do not want to consider cuts for the administrators, either in salary or in positions.
Support. Any other comment? All those in favor?
More.
Opposed? Motion passes forward too.
Can I make a motion now?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to make a motion that we give the finance department or administration direction to make zero cuts to any employee of this district, and not administrators, but all employees.
Are you talking salary?
Salary.
Okay, I'll support that.
No, wait, wait.
What's the question?
That we're not cutting any salaries or we're not cutting any positions? I haven't seen, salary. Very smart. I mean, there's nothing proposed to do that, right, in your budget?
That's not part of the motion. No, no, you're talking about, you're not talking about positions, you're talking about hourly or salary positions.
Yeah, no cutting pay. Right, I mean, we said we're gonna do all for one, one for all. If nobody gets a cut, nobody gets a cut. If one person gets a cut, we all get a cut. That's what everybody just pretty much said here. We're all for one, one for all. So I'm saying, let's make it all for one, one for all. Nobody gets a cut.
I do as much as, yeah, I, I hate to negotiate at this table. I mean, we have-
Oh, we're just giving direction. We're not negotiating, we're giving direction.
Heck, like you said, that, well, we know what you're talking about, but at least not gonna cut my budget.
No, instead, I'm just, I'm just gonna say the administration, all. I'm saying all.
It's just that's a negotiated item, it's not that anybody, we don't even have a proposal to cut pay, so. I don't know if we did any proposals.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Right, I'm just trying to include everybody.
I don't want to tie the hands of our negotiation team. I totally, trust me, I'm totally supportive.
You understand, I want to include-
Our staff has taken the, the balances budget on our, from our district on their backs, wherever money we can free up, to at least move them something. I totally agree. I, I just, I, I just want to make it across the board, you know, and not just administrators, everybody.
I'd like to say something, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I agree with what your premises and I don't want to-
You know, I'm just trying to say-
I just want to be cautious though, that, and I, and I can't think of an example right now, but I want to be cautious that we don't say, well, hey, uh, somebody has chosen not to do this work anymore and they want to go for a different position, and now they want to keep the same pay because word said something, you know, and it's a totally different unrelated, I know that's not your intent, but I don't want it to be, come across that way.
Okay, but you know where I'm coming from. I just, I want it to be all for one, one for all.
I think we all agree with that.
Yeah, okay. So I'll say, if, if it's not gonna get the support, there's no need for it.
Is that a draw?
Yeah.
The next topic, the next item, uh, is the use of the fund balance.
Can I say something about that too, Heather?
Sure.
With the proposals of where we're at, they add up to having nine hundred thirty-four thousand dollars over the current fund balance at the beginning, so I don't know if this is really a topic of discussion.
Well, well, and everybody else can speak of after, but I think you've got direction that you know how we want our fund balance protected, you know that we want to reward employees with whatever little or a lot that we possibly can, and I think with that pot of money that you now have sitting in your budget, you need to address fund balance and something for staff. All staff. If anybody, if I misrepresented, you know, is that clear enough, uh, direction for the budget?
Yes.
The next two weeks. Great, thank you very much. Next we move to our anti-balling task force update. Dr. Wonderlick.
Thank you. Um, we have not done since our last meeting, but we do have a meeting scheduled for May, excuse me, May thirtieth with the task force. And we are working right now with open schools on the survey that will be going up, um, to students before the end of the school year, so, um, the meeting is set and the survey is in open schools hands right now.
Is the student, or the survey's just for students?
At this point, we're working on a student survey, uh, made because we don't want to lose that audience right now. We would be able to follow up, uh, we could do a staff survey, I know that's in your interest. We could do that, we'll be on this time as well, but I want to get students focused to lay out.
And parent survey too.
Thank you. With that, we move to audience comments on action items, and I have no green cards for anyone in the audience who'd like to address any action item. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address this on an action item? With that, we move to approve of the minutes. Secretary Pickett?
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the May third, two thousand eighteen interim meeting. I so move.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Alls in favor? Heather?
Yes.
Close, motion passes six to zero. Accounts payable, Mrs. Sutherland?
Yes, accounts payable for April twenty-seventh eighteen, that's the twenty-seventeen eighteen budget. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the check electronic funds transfer register for the month of April as listed in pages one through one ninety-three and fifth third account statement listed on pages one through the, one through three. Invoices have been processed by accounts payable and purchasing per requisitions submitted by various departments, and all are within prescribed budget allocations. I so move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Alls in favor?
Yes.
Close, motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Uh, the school district financial statement, the board is in receipt of the statement of revenues and expenditures for the ten months ending April twenty eighteen.
Thank you. New business, Mr. Pickett?
Uh, superintendent's recommendation ninety-seven dash seventeen dash eighteen retirements, resignations, leave of absence, expirations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the resignations and retirements presented. I so move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Alls in favor? Heather? Close, motion passes six to zero.
A superintendent's recommendation ninety-eight dash seventeen dash eighteen teaching contract changes and appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the teaching contract changes and appointments for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year as presented. I so move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Um, any comments? Dr. Wonderlick? Do you want to comment?
Sure.
You want to comment before we vote? Who wants to vote?
Well, let them vote.
All right.
Okay.
Alls in favor?
Yes.
Close, motion passes six to zero.
We missed, we're not to that point yet.
That's not here, that's one. That's why you didn't-
That's right. I lie so ragged, I'm getting down, like, we're not turning one up. I do it up down, but the one way that I can say it, stop.
Your job is to judge.
All right.
Superintendent's recommendation ninety-nine dash seventeen dash eighteen administrative contract changes and appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the administrative appointment presented for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Erica Rolak, Principal Riverside Elementary School, one hundred percent administrator contract effective May eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, that's tomorrow. I so move.
Support. It's been supported. Sorry, Erica, I knew I'd get to this fast, I couldn't. But any other comments from the board? Alls in favor? Heather?
Most definitely yes.
Close, motion passes six to zero. Now, Dr. Wonderlick?
All right, well, first I want to round of applause, so, yeah. We've been really fortunate to have Erica on board for the second semester of this school year at Riverside. And she hit the ground running. Uh, it was not always a smooth course that she was running on, and she handled everything beautifully, uh, up to and including, uh, an issue we had, uh, yesterday with a student falling and bumping his head and ended up in hospital. So, uh, she's handled it all beautifully and done a, a great, great job, and we'd like to welcome her to the Waterford team. So Erica, if you want to come down here, give a handshake all the way across. Watch out for nameplates. We'd love to, love to shake your hand and congratulate you on, uh, being a Riverside principal and absolute. We'll help her with applause on the way down. Okay. Oh, yeah, just at least five minutes. Not the thirty minutes, Peter. Just for going ahead. I just asked Erica if she would walk to right, or walk to the microphone, only because if you won't comment back to us, we can't hear you when you stand up, because I know you want to recognize some people in the audience with you. I want to thank you, it's sort of like, uh, we tested you out, and then you tested the district out, and I, I'm so happy that you're excited to be in Waterford. We're excited to have you in Waterford, and so, um, welcome officially permanently to the Waterford community, so.
Thank you. I like to wear a permanent, I like to be tired from Riverside Elementary School. Thank you. I honestly thought he was joking when he said, go over to my- But, um, I truly would, would like to thank everyone, um, from the school board to the, um, central office administration, to the staff at Riverside. Thank you all for staying here with me tonight as well. Uh, there was other staff here, and I understand that, you know, we do have to, I have to share you with your families. But thank you so much. The community has been great. Uh, I truly enjoy being here, and I do remember joking, you know, I think the first time I met Dr. Wonderlick, the conversation was kind of like, I'm, I'm going, so why do you have an opening in the middle of the year? And he's going, why are you available in the middle of the year? So we're both kind of like, let's see how this thing goes here. And I'm, I'm eternally grateful that it truly seems to be an absolute perfect marriage and, uh, of, um, strengths and needs and wants and, and just the whole nine yards. So I'm excited to be here and I look forward to many years in Waterford and working with all of them.
Great, thank you. Achieving this impromptu speech as well. The Riverside staff has to stay to the rest of the meeting. You guys have family.
Just one.
A superintendent's recommendation one hundred dash seventeen dash eighteen Oakland Intermediate School District Budget two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution in support of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Oakland Intermediate School District Budget. I so move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Alls in favor? Heather? Close, motion passes six to zero.
Superintendent's recommendation one oh one dash seventeen dash eighteen Oakland Intermediate School District Election Resolution. In accordance with the Revised School Code, it is recommended that the Board of Education adopt the attached Oakland Intermediate School District Election Resolution, which designates member Sutherland to vote in the election on behalf of the local district board. Uh, directs member Sutherland that the board supports Dr. Teresa Rich and Mr. Mark Katz for each position to be filled, and directs member Sutherland to vote for those individuals at least on the first ballot taken by the electoral body. I so move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? For those in the audience, that's how Waterford Intermediate School District Board members are elected. They're elected by their fellow, uh, school board members in Elk County versus an election out to the public, so. Alls in favor?
Yes.
Close, motion passes six to zero.
Superintendent's recommendation one oh two dash seventeen dash eighteen Kettering French trip to Spain and France, revised travel dates. On June fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Board of Education approved the proposed Kettering High School Spanish class trip to Spain and France, February twentieth through March second, two thousand nineteen, presented by teacher Suzanne Abrams. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the teacher's request to postpone this trip by one year with revised travel dates of March thirty-first through April ninth of tooth, uh, of two thousand twenty. Approval would be rescinded if the area to be visited is issued a travel warning. I so move.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any comments or questions? Alls in favor?
Yes.
Close, motion passes six to zero. Next. Next we move to audience comments on nine action items. I have one green card. Uh, Mrs. Crayton?
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of all of the Waterford education employees from bus drivers and food service, librarian, all of us, all across the district with a special honor tonight. Um, for those of you that don't know, Brian was, was an amazing part of the Waterford's community district. I was fortunate enough to be a teacher that his kids went through Riverside Elementary. So we're making a donation tonight, um, to the Waterford Foundation for a hundred dollars on his behalf and, um, wishing his family the very best.
Thank you, Mary. The whole school community appreciates that, and I'm sure the family does awesome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to dress the board out of the, the non-action item? This is my record.
I was contacted by a couple principals in the last week. It's been a trying week in our family. My husband had surgery this week. So, getting a call and it, somebody asked me to make the time because a group of principals has filed a charge against board, the board members. I was told three. I'm not sure of all the consideration I have had to talk to Mary or Bob or John Hall or you, John, Joan, or Mr. Trushel. Whatever this is, we are Waterford. We need to make sure we take care of Waterford. Asking questions is something that kids do, teachers encourage, principals love, and we need to grow. All I know is these two individuals didn't know where our future was for Waterford. So help me with that, because this is not what Waterford is. We had the ethics conversation that you had next week, we talked about no surprises, and they were a little bit discouraged. They don't know where we stand. When I was on the board, it was never seven, oh, on important things like budget. We all fought for what we believed in. Every principal wants their school to stay open. Every one of you want the best, best education for kids. Let's show Waterford that this is what we are. I wasn't able to go to the meeting on Tuesday, like I said, where he had surgery. But we need our community. You are the base of everything Waterford. We don't have downtown. It's our schools. Let's be what we are. We are the best. So please, let's, I don't know what the issue is, I ask not to be too much fault in it because I have to trust in the seven of you, in every administrator, in every teacher, because we have the best district. And I'm here because I support our school board. Not to cause rift, but I want what's best for our kids, and I need everybody to be able to ask questions without feeling the fear of being attacked. And if our principals to come to me, I'm not the last board member that went and get reelected. There's an issue out there. Help me fix it. The only person who can do that issue fix.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to dress the board? With that, we move to discussion items. Information on behalf of military, the two thousand, information on the two thousand eighteen-nineteen budget, information on the summer tax collection fees, information on continuing employment of teaching personnel, continuing employment of administrative personnel. We'll take action on the notice of the public hearing, action on the subject system for open elementary. Board of Education reports.
To say it's been a, um, exciting week, at least for, uh, me personally and our high school principals. A lot of, um, award ceremonies, uh, NHS awards, the senior awards I've been invited to, and, and I'll tell you, some of these seniors, oh man, some of the awards and the stuff they're going to do, um, and like I said, and I've always preached, they got their education right here in the school district, and the scholarships they're getting, the, the, the awards they're getting, you know, they got them right here in Waterford. So some, when, when people say Waterford doesn't have it, they're getting it right here in Waterford. They, they're getting a great education, these kids, and, um, boy, some of, some of these kids that I've got to know are just, they are gonna do such great things, and, um, Waterford's been a great district for these kids, and I just want to congratulate all the kids, as they get ready to head off to college or the military or the workplace. We got some really good kids graduating that are gonna do some great things, and, and they're getting full rides to like Harvard and Stanford and all these colleges. getting full rides to Harvard and Stanford and all these colleges. That's crazy, and that's Waterford kids getting that. So we should be very, very proud of this district. So that's, commencement is two weeks and three days and two days and 17 hours and four six minutes.
When's that first tuition check due?
I actually took a withdrawal from our college fund today to make a payment.
Ale? Great, thank you. Joan?
Thank you. I want to echo Mr. Pigott's comments. I wasn't able to attend the Mott Senior Honors Program, much to my just incredible frustration. I had a family commitment, but I graduated from Waterford Mott, and I love being there on that night. So Mr. Reeves, I know extraordinary kids. I see some of them still in the audience here. And when I was at the Kettering Awards on Wednesday night, I could not help but feel so good about the future of the world that we live in. When you see these students, just the best and the brightest, hearing their stories was just profoundly touching. And I will say, the other piece that I didn't expect was hearing the teachers' relationship, each student that they talked about, it's evident the incredible bond that our teachers have with our students, and that every single day, teachers, staff members, support staff, custodians, bus drivers, food service personnel, our teachers, our principals, all of them touch the life of our students in ways, every single day, every single student, in ways that we might not necessarily get a chance to see, but when you get a little glimpse of it, it's pretty astounding. And I was just so deeply touched by the experience, and I know that it was completely replicated at Mott, and I'm just so proud of these kids. The next time we will meet as a board will be after graduation, so I wanted to extend my sincere congratulations to Mr. Pigott. His daughter was honored at this ceremony, and we'll be graduating prior to our next board meeting, which I know is going to be quite a moment for him. I also wanted to, I know that Mr. Smith, it was so incredibly appropriate that he was here with his sweet little Delaney in his arms, with his entire troop 3098, the Team 3098 from Waterford Kettering, but what a phenomenal group of kids that was. Just want to thank the community and the volunteers and the mentors and the sponsors that help out our robotics teams, because without them, these kids wouldn't have this opportunity. I want to express my sincere congratulations to Team 3098 for their extraordinary accomplishments, not just this year, it's really every year, but this year they happened to really hit a pinnacle, and you saw it in that video, just astounding. But also really want to thank Mr. Steve Smith, because, you know, with his sweet little daughter on his hip, he was still here, and he splits his time between his family at home and his family that he's established at Waterford Kettering and with these students. So just great results, and such a great example of the great things that happen here in Waterford. I know I use the word great a lot, so hopefully that got the message across. I also wanted to congratulate Mrs. Van Loe on the Teacher of the Year Award. That was another opportunity at the Teacher of the Year that the Waterford Foundation sponsors, to hear all 12 nominees, their stories, and to hear what the kids say about them and their fellow teachers and their administrators was so humbling, and just another example of just extraordinary performance and people, extraordinary people, human beings that touch the life of our students. And they were just a representation of that same dedication that is extended throughout our entire district. I know it, I feel it, I see it every single day. I also wanted to thank my colleague, Mr. Patricia and his brother Kevin, for their annual relentless stellar support of the Waterford Optimist Club. I think, single-handedly, the two of them, so dual-handedly, sell probably, I don't know, 70 or 80% of the tickets, and that is a great fundraiser for the Waterford Optimist Club, it's a great community event, but that money then gets turned back to the schools and for the benefit of kids, and so that's a win-win all the way around, and just really appreciate his support of the Waterford Optimist Club. I think that's it.
Can I throw one more thing in?
I forgot.
Well, kind of, no, but you brought up, and you brought up Mrs. Van Loe, and I wanted to say this earlier, because my daughter has her, and you talked about the relationships the kids have with the teachers or whatever, but there was, a few months ago, my daughter heard her knee, she had a doctor appointment, and we're trying to schedule when to do it during the day, doctors, knee doctors hardly put it at night, or weekends, it's the day, and we're trying to do a time, and there was a time, and it was going to be, she was going to miss a few classes, and one of them, she said, "Oh, it's AP Calc, I can't miss that class." I said, "Oh, do you have a big test that day?" And she's like, "No, it's Mrs. Van Loe, I love her class, she actually has fun going to that class," you know, and she says, "Mrs. Van Loe just makes it so fun." So I appreciate that. And then too, I wanted to say, to Miss Cooper, last night, what you did, my daughter, again, I talk about my daughter all the time, I know, but she's trying to pick out of her dorm at Michigan State, and yesterday was nothing but tears all day because this dorm wasn't open and that dorm wasn't open, and then she should have picked a room here, and she waited and called a friend, and then that one got taken, and she was like so emotional, and she got home last night, and you gave her just a couple minute chat afterwards, talking to her more as a friend, and just let to do whatever, and she laughed, she's like, "I just love this Cooper," you know, so thank you. I mean, it's more than just being a principal, being a friend, and just, you know, that few minutes of just chatting with her were so good, so thank you.
Thank you. Heather, we can hear you if you have a board report.
Uh, nope, I'm in the same place I was 10 weeks ago. Thank you.
Can I add something?
Certainly.
To comment, no, as a board, we want to extend our very best to our colleague Heather. She's recuperating from surgery. We miss her there at the board, we're grateful to her for being on the phone, and we wish you a speedy recovery, because we need you and we love you and we want you back.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I just want to offer a district condolences to Brian Weston family and the Patricia family. I met Brian when I was an active Riverside parent, and he convinced me 26 some years ago I should run for the Board of Education. We then built houses next to each other, and our kids were there for 20 years. I think Brian was a leader in this district from the day he walked in. I know certainly stories of middle school and high school. He was a great leader of education, he never forgot Waterford, is clearly example of too good, too sound, and so my condolences by and to the district. With that, Dr. Wonderlick.
Thank you. I was going to start with Brian as well, he said many things from the district perspective. I'll also go beyond, you know, his impact on this school district. You know, he has, as a superintendent in two different districts, having Brian as the state superintendent of schools really and truly made a difference in the work that we do as school districts. He was somebody that got it, you know, I'm sure because of his work here, but also his work as superintendent of Dearborn, that a lot of the things that we continually complain don't make sense at the Department of Ed, he was fixing all of those. So there was a great shock and a great sense of loss from educators across the state in losing Brian, because he was really, truly making a difference statewide. He was doing things that were making sense, he was changing things that needed to be changed, and I'm concerned now about the direction of the Department of Ed without him leading it, so it's a great, great loss to the field of education and a great loss to Waterford as well. There was one other concern this week that I want to just talk briefly on, and no one came up to the microphone, but I think that we should at least talk a little bit about senior transportation, and Waterford Schools has supported transportation for senior center, for the senior center and senior citizens for decades. We maintain smart buses, we've hired drivers. Waterford Township has helped us with that through giving us money to help to pay the costs. We currently get $40,000 from the township to help us with that. We used to give $100,000. That particular service has, in order to ride, one of those buses should pay $3, and the $3 and the $40,000 from the township doesn't, you know, come close to the cost of running that particular service. So at the end of last school year, we had a debt within the senior center budget of $900,000, much of it due to transportation. So it was obvious that we needed to make some changes. We began meeting with the township in October, our first meeting was October 12th. We've had four meetings with the township, with the marching group, there've been additional meetings and phone calls. Waterford Township actually holds the smart contract, and they provide some transportation themselves, and we provide the door-to-door transportation for seniors. And we've been sitting down with them, trying to figure out a way of, you know, how can the service be maintained and the cost, you know, the cost reduced. There was recently a change in the frequency of some routes, and that went off very successfully and changed costs. We've been discussing some other options, such as changing the employment of the drivers from the school district to the township, which would save our 38% legacy costs. There's been talk about a consortium of senior transportation, which might save, you know, some other employee costs with that as well. So we've been discussing these, and we are very close, there's another conversation today, we're very close to a resolution and having that solved. What we would like to do is to, you know, make sure that seniors continue to have their transportation, yet we want to be able to do that within the budget that, you know, that we have available for us. So we want to be able to give the service and still have the cost savings, and we have some ideas on the table right now that we're working through. So that's, I think that's important for the seniors of Waterford Township to know. The district and the township are working closely together, and I think a solution is not far away, and so stay tuned, and we'll have that for you soon. I'll also echo on some of the happier notes I brought with me, the book from Waterford Mott's Senior Honors Night, which was Tuesday, and Waterford Kettering Honors Night, which was last night. You flip through this, and not exaggerating, there are hundreds of students from both high schools that were honored for a wide variety of achievements, but most of them academic. We've got some really smart kids doing some really great things, and this is their moment to shine. Many of them you saw here tonight, were part of both of those honors nights. So we've got, you know, you saw our Teacher of the Year, you saw our robotics kids, we've got great students doing great things, and a lot of them have been recognized this week. Also simultaneous with both of those senior honor nights, our art shows at both of the high schools. I have no artistic ability whatsoever, so I'm just so impressed when I go there and I see what high schools and kids are doing, and it's every medium that you can think of. There's photography, there's two-dimensional drawings, there's three-dimensional pottery, jewelry, there's all sorts of different things. You're for sure going to find something that you like, it's just wonderful. So if you happen to be there for another event, because we've got choir concerts, we've got band concerts, orchestra concerts, there's a play, I think, going on right now, there's, you know, lots of things that are happening at our high schools. Don't forget to stop by the PAC lobby and see the art show, because it's absolutely fantastic. It was today, it was Leadership Day at Beaumont, and that was a great day. Many of our elementary schools are leader-in-be schools, and each one of them have a leadership day to kind of show off to the public the skills that they're using, the things that they're learning in school, and it's just, it was a wonderful activity to see, you know, students, you know, as young as kindergarten and first grade up through fifth grade, presenting to groups of adults and doing just a really great job of it. So congratulations to each one of them. Just this past week, we have had multiple high school students have signings to continue their sport in college, we've had students for baseball, soccer, and dance. Again, it's just this week, we've had these, you know, continuously, and it's just great to see students from our athletic programs also being successful, going on to the next level. We also had a student from Kingsley Montgomery School who won a national essay contest from Scholastic Magazine, and he did a great job with that, so very nice to see recognition coming out of KMS. Also, within the last couple weeks, we had Durant's Most Approved Students, and they were honored by the Waterford Foundation for their improvement academically. One of the things, I don't know if everybody remembers, Mary Lou Simmons, and there are various experiences that because of Mary Lou's donation to the Waterford Foundation that have been done with students at elementary and middle school, and over the, I think it was last week, we had some workshops by Waterford grad and musician Dave Bennett, who came in and worked, the students demonstrating some things in a workshop-type atmosphere, interacting with students. Because I know he was going to stick around, Marco's still here, hi Marco, how you doing? He's competing with me on the suit and tie there, I'm not sure how I feel about that. Can you believe that? Having the, he wins, thank you. I picked up what you said in a delay there. Harvard, Stanford, and then Swarthmore, which I'm not actually even familiar with, where the state is at.
Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania. So he's got, you know, what a selection, and what a choice to have to make, but have a picture of him wearing his red Stanford T-shirt there, so congratulations on that. You should be proud for yourself, but I'm not sure you really realize the impact of what you've accomplished on the entire school district, because now we get to brag about you and say, "Yeah," I mean, I just enjoy saying it, "Yeah, we've got a kid who had his choice of a full ride to Harvard or a full ride to Stanford," and that's just a really cool thing, so congratulations on that. But the, one more round of applause. And because I'm recognizing a Mott student right there, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize a Kettering student. David Robinson goes to Open Schools Academy, he has Northwest, he's in the culinary program. The culinary team he was on won the Michigan State Pro Start Culinary Competition, and then placed fifth nationally, and as a result, he has qualified for over $93,000 in scholarships. So, and that's just... We're talking about one from each high school. We've got books full of kids doing great things at our high schools, absolutely phenomenal. I forget, I think Jason used to, it was $4 million in scholarships for Mott kids, I assume Kettering is right around the same thing. Just incredible work by incredible kids, so thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. Heather, I don't know if I shut my phone off, if you're backwards. So with that, we move to closed session by a roll call vote. The Board of Education will move to closed session for the evaluation of a superintendent. We will reconvene after that closed session. Leader, roll call vote, please. Patricia?
Yes.
Barbie? Do you say?
No.
Pigott?
No.
Himmelspah?
Yes.
Torres?
Is absent.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Heather?
Speaker.
Heather? Yeah, we need your yes or no, if we could go in closed session. Yes, thank you. Yeah, I forgot to put the speaker on. Motion, all those, so it's four to two. Four, four to two, correct, to move into closed session. Thank you. We're going to reconvene here, so that you can come to me here. And you're okay, Heather?
Uh, no.
Yes. The Board of Education meeting has reconvened?
President Himmelspah, I'd like to make a motion in reference to the superintendent's evaluation...
evaluation for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year and in support of his contract to have this evaluation completed prior to June first. I would like to submit him as being highly, as being effective.
Support.
Been moved and supported? Are there any comments?
I kind of think he's highly effective, but in the way that it's, and I don't know politics, you know, whatever, but I think he's a great superintendent and I enjoy having him here. I look forward to him moving our district forward.
I have appreciated your work last year, Keith. We use the same similar tool that we have our teachers go through where student growth and student is measured into your rating and it's fun like a teacher who may not have total control of what a rating is, it's a document that's, it's appropriate since we plan our teachers to. So I think effective, it doesn't say as much as I can give you as the district. I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
And again, this is a Sutherland that we put up. It's in this contract, it must be evaluated and it's been ready before June first. Currently, this being our last meeting, it's my, some people may say that it was rushed and they didn't know about it. It's in this contract. We do this every year at this time.
Following the same miles last year, we have a lot from Michigan Associates School who took their train in. Dr. Wonderlet gave us his self-evaluation with documentation, we spent time in person reviewing it and then we finished session at, at this conversation.
John, can I say something?
Sure, sure, Kevin.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank you, Keith. I think you, yeah, you're a bit of a, of a big guy on your plate, on your plate and I think you handled everything so diligently and professionally and we just really appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo the comments of all of my board colleagues and thank you for your sure new service to our district, for maintaining a precision focus on the students that we serve each and every day and for leading through some pretty rocky, rocky, rocky roads. But at the end of the day, kind of meeting that we had tonight and the kind of celebrations that we've seen over the last many, many weeks, in fact, every single board meeting and the extraordinary improvement that we've made in student achievement growth, I think is, is just commendable and we appreciate the leadership that got us to this place and we look forward to continuing that upward trajectory onward and upward.
Thank you. With that, those in favor? Others? Is it yes? No? No, no else? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Thank you very much. With that. I'm sure I overclapped about any evaluation. With that word, Jim.